I'll call the meeting of the county commission to order. Mr. Kenny Moffitt will now give our invitation.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Ethan Campbell, pastor of Free and Life Church here in McMinnville. He'll be doing our invitation, folks.
I would like to say this, it's okay, to bring the word of the Lord up. 1 Timothy, chapter 2, tells us that we need to give thanks for those who are in authority. And I want to say thank you guys for serving our community. And it also says there that we should pray for those who are in authority, that we may live a quiet and peaceful life. So let's do that. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before your throne and we thank you so much for giving us this blessed day. I thank you for everyone of these individuals here, Lord, that are serving our community. I pray your blessing upon them, your blessing upon this meeting tonight. Lord, that you would guide their thoughts, that you would guide every decision that's made, that there would be unity. And Lord, that every decision that's made, Lord, would benefit this community. And Lord, we again just thank you so much. We thank you, God, for your goodness to us. We thank you, Lord, for our county. And again, we thank you for everyone of these individuals that are serving this community. I thank you so much, Lord. Bless this meeting tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, Mr. Carr, hold on a little. Give our place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll now ask for the court call roll.
Michael Dale?
Here.
Carl Bolton?
Here.
Charlie Brown? Charles Dodson?
Here.
Randy England?
Here.
Steve Gillen?
Here.
Stephen Hilton?
Here.
Brad Hillis?
Here.
James Hines?
Here.
Scott Killian?
Here.
Ron Lee?
Here.
Gary Martin? Ian Lawton?
Here.
Emma Guthrie?
Here.
Casey Owens?
Here.
Gary Carter?
Here.
Chris Reedy?
Here.
Kristy Ross?
Here.
Scott Rutherford?
Here.
Tony Savage?
Here.
Donna Smith?
Here.
Philip Stow?
Here.
Cole Taylor?
Here.
Blaine Wilcher?
Here.
All right, now we'll move on to item number five, the adoption of our docket tonight.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion by Mr. Bell, the second by Mr. Dotson, to adopt their docket. Mr. Ron Lake?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion if we drop item number nine and we'll approach that here another day.
Do you want to make an amendment?
Yes, yes.
Drop item number nine. We got a second by Mr. Ridley. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're back on our original motion with item number nine, we moved from the docket. We're approving our docket for tonight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. At this time, if anyone in the public would like to public speak, you can go to Mr. Jason Ellis, the chief of staff, to sign up. You can give me the list after we do our departmental reports. Anything on the agenda that you might want to speak on. We'll move on to the reading of the minutes.
I made a motion when you dispensed with the reading, and the presenters proceed.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Andy Engle, the second, Mr. Thomas Savage. All those in favor, dispense with the reading. The minutes have proven those, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass the minutes. We'll move on to the elected official departmental reports, of Mr. Levy Glenn, Highway Department.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, of course, you have my report. If any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Motion to approve. We have a motion, Mr. Prater?
Second.
Second by Mr. Engle. Any questions about the highway report?
I can't find the highway report as I... My doctor says there was no reports needed.
Are the financial reports in? You got the financial report?
Yes, I do.
That's all we've ever had.
Any more questions? All those in favor, approve of the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The Warren County Sheriff's Second Quarter Report. Mr. Jack, you're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Do you have my report, or is there any questions?
Motion to approve this report. Motion by Mr. Hilton, second by Mr. Kenny Moffitt. Anybody have any questions for the sheriff's report? Any none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number three, the Warren County Schools' Quarter Report, Mr. Grant Swanson.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to be here. You've got a copy of my report. Just want to say that we've had a good start to our school year. I'll add one thing to that. Also, we've worked with county to move quickly on our employee health clinic. We're making some progress on that and trying to get that open as soon as we can. And we've secured a place to have that in the interim while we build our facility. We're finalizing that, and so we hope to have some good progress in the next couple of weeks. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion by Mr. Staff, the second by Mr. Rippey. Any questions, Mr. Salt?
Got a question. How about COVID? Is there any of that around our school system?
Yes, sir. We've got a couple of schools that are showing some cases of that. Of course, again, not anything near as widespread as what we've had in the last couple of years. But we have had some cases pop up. We've had a couple of schools that are a little worse than normal, but we're still following all our regular protocols.
Mr. Oliver, on a timeline of getting your temporary clinic better, is that a week, weeks, months?
We actually have the space. We could probably move into the space in the next week or so. Right now, we're waiting on a company to hire the personnel. And we, I think, have made an offer already at that point, but certainly getting them away from their job, where they have to give notice and then end of this current job, and then that will probably... It's going to be a month to two, but we hope it's closer to a month.
Well, I hope so. We've got some of our employees, if we need that, as soon as we can get it.
Sure. Thank you.
We are moving as fast as we can move, all that, yeah. Anybody else have any more questions? If all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to pass the minutes. Sanitation Departmental Report, Mr. Josh Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, of course. I'd like to make an announcement about our Smart Station Convenience Center, our new location, 190 Hennessy Avenue. We will be opening that September the 1st. So that's a huge improvement for our citizens of Warren County. I want to thank all the employees within the department for coming together and getting that built. We did most of that in-house, so we're proud of that. And I'll take any questions on the report.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Bell, the second by Mr. Glenn.
I want to talk...
All right.
Listen, Josh, I thank you for a good job you've done with this convenience center. I mean, you saved the county a lot of money. Sometimes we don't appreciate that. When this paper come out, and this was in there, it's Fire View's Convenience Center. And let me talk about how clean it was. That's just one of the many. And I just hope the best for you, and just keep on working. Everybody can work out for you.
Well, thank you. And I have to give all that credit back to the employees of the department, because of the vow of union of the department. So I have to give the credit back to them, and that's our job.
Mr. Chairman?
Can you update us on the Martian Convenience Center as well?
Yes. So we've got all the tops old stripped off of that site. We put down around 33 loads of inch and a half, got that rolled in. Got to give thanks to Lady Glenn, Rosewood Clinic, for letting us borrow this steel drum roller to do that. So we got all the rock rolled in. We've been fully through, through T-Day, for the convenience center, so we'll be starting the next phase on that. We're really just giving Smart Station all of our time right now, trying to get it and go. We've still got a lot of things to do there, but we're working every day there, and we're going to get that September the 1st. So once we get that done, we can jump out there on horse and get that started. That's been a process.
Any more questions? If no questions, all those in favor, approve of the sanitation department report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass the minutes. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the Finance Department Report, Mr. Scott. Hey, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, report. You have my report. You have any questions, I'll give my best answer at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion by Mr. Ridley, the second by Mr. Taylor. Any questions about the financial report tonight? If nobody has none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, pass the minutes. We'll move on to number eight, our committee reports. We'll start off with budget finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Mr. Bell, Building Grounds?
Building Grounds, only thing I will say is we've started looking at the roof at the mall and looking... We got engineering hard to give some ideas of how to fix that. That's all I have to report at this time.
Economic Affairs, Mr. Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have to report is our next meeting will be September the 11th at 5:00. Thank you.
Education, Mr. Black?
Clean Dr. Swallows got pretty well covered.
At this time, financial affairs, if anybody has nothing to report. We'll move on into Health and Welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this month, Health and Welfare met, and we continue over the next few months to talk about what we can do that's fair to responsible pet owners to address our spay and neuter situation and young or animals. So any ideas any commissioner has, please give one of us on the committee. We appreciate the ones that have spoken to us and come to meetings. We want to address this in a way that's fair to everybody, but also address the situation. That's all I have at this time.
Mr. Prater, Highway Bridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the past two, three weeks, and the storms and everything, our department had over 60 cows trees down, so you can see how busy they've been there. So they're still cleaning that up and bushing up. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas Savage, Policy Personnel?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Policy Personnel met last Monday, the 14th, and we got reports from... A brief report from the Coats Department and the Judicial Commissioner. And we discussed the HR intent that would be both known tonight. Do have some good news. One of our major ice hogs that the Coats Department's been working on in the county has been cleaned up, and hope this pays the way for some more. We appreciate the Coats Department and all of our... Thank you.
Mr. Ron Lake, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our EMS been working hard here. Thanks very much, too. We're real proud of what Josh has done with sanitation. That's all I have to say.
Political partnership, Mr. Bell?
Population is 261. That's actually a 31 population increase. Out of that, 198 of them are male, 63 female, 13 TDOC. Part of the reason for the increase is the sheriff did a roundup. Him and the sheriff's department and the city worked together. They ended up arresting over 23 individuals in one day, and I think he said that there's over 30 arrested in the whole roundup. So we're grateful for them and working on getting those drugs off of the streets of Warren County. 61% of the inmates are pre-sentencing or awaiting sentencing. They did get five new vehicles coming in, so we're proud to finally get some of those vehicles that's been on back order that we've been waiting on for so long. The jail has got a new full-time maintenance person, so that's new, and we appreciate everything that they're doing. We've got a couple of line items tonight. Line item number two, where the school system, they've got three cars that they're going to be purchasing for the sheriff's department, SROs. And then line item number four, we're going to talk about a command center trailer. They also did an active shooting drill over in Covenant. They had 10 different agencies participate in that drill. It was extremely successful. Of course, they learned a lot. It's my understanding that he's planning on doing a few more grills in the near future, so if you see that or whatever, that's just the training that they're doing, and trying to be extremely proactive in our community to learn how to handle those situations. So the sheriff's been extremely busy with all this stuff going on and doing a great job. We appreciate him.
Lance Lake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
We'll move on to item number nine. Does anybody sign up for public comment? If you've signed up for public comment, we'll move right into new business. Item number one, Mr. Carr.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. This is a two-part entry for Parker Masters' office. First section, the first four lines, the convenience institute, the FY41 raises that were not given to this office during the budgetary process, these were left out after the motion was made prior to voting by the commission. The second part would be line item number 709, $2,000. Is there be appropriating funds for restricted fund balance for purchase of computer... We'll yep.
We hear a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion, Mr. Ridley, the second. The second. Mr. Staff, anybody have any questions about this? Questions about the amendment? If there's no questions, I'll ask for the call roll.
Michael Dale?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Gillen?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Killian?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Ian Lawton?
Yes.
Emma Guthrie?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Reedy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Tony Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes 22, yes. We'll move on to item number two, the Prop. This is a quick one, I'll let you decide.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment for the sheriff's department to establish beginnings of the state SRO grant, which gave $75,000 per school in the system to be spent towards the SROs. The schools had previously agreed to pay for that majority of it. And so they've moved some things around within their contribution to establish the two new SROs that will be in place this year, as well as to establish three vehicles that will be designated for SROs further satisfied.
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Mr. Hilton, the second by Mr. Dotson. Anybody have any questions? This is the new, the way the SRO officers will be funded coming after the study. And I'll be running through the sheriff's department to reason why we're making these amendments. Anybody else have any questions about the amendment? Any none, I'll ask for the call roll.
Michael Dale?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Gillen?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Killian?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Ian Lawton?
Yes.
Emma Guthrie?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Reedy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Tony Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes 22, yes. We move on to item number three, which runs through my office and Mr. Carr's office, too. It's kind of a joint, GFFY 23-24-8. Well, we're, we got to looking into what is costing us to build the agenda. And there's a possibility we can save close to $15,000 by moving to another company. But we want to, we're tied with them for another year. It'll be too long before we can get out of it. And we're wanting to appropriate this money to try, do a trial run, and make sure that they're going to be able to do everything the county needs to do and serve our citizens. So that's what this amendment's about.
Motion approved.
A motion by Mr. Hilton, the second. Second by Mr. Hillis. Anybody have any questions about the amendment? Any none, I'll ask for the call roll.
Michael Dale?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Gillen?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Killian?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Ian Lawton?
Yes.
Emma Guthrie?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Reedy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Tony Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes, number three passes 22 to zero. We'll move on to item number four. Item number four comes out of our grills that we've been having for our... To make sure our schools are safe in case we have a problem at our schools. And we learned that our sheriff's department, we have nothing for them to set up a command center out of or take things to the site and hurt, so we can get things done. And I attended a meeting of the county executives, and Warren County brought up about their $50,000 of local assistance and travel consistency funds. And so we filled out that, and we got that $50,000. And so we're asking that you let us spend $25,000 of that and $8,000 from a previous command center that they sold years ago, I don't know, maybe five, six years ago, a long time ago. And they're going to give us a trailer where we can take these supplies and have some simple things that you don't think about. Another thing, rather, this fall, which when we had a fire up on the mountain, we realized just some little, some little simple things that you would need when an incident like that occurs. So that's what we're looking to do with item number four.
Motion approved.
We have a motion, Mr. Chairman, the second by Mr. Dotson. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, one clerical question. Did we come to the realization that those were not restricted funds?
We did, but the sheriff's department thought...
Okay. I'd like to amend the motion and remove the word restricted from that, just for clarification. We've got a clerical...
Yeah, there's a second, you got a second, Mr. Cole Taylor. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, we're just going to remove the restricted funds from that. Funds will remain the same. Anybody else have any more questions? I'll ask for the call roll.
Michael Dale?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Gillen?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Killian?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Ian Lawton?
Yes.
Emma Guthrie?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Reedy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Tony Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Item number four passes 21 to zero. We'll move on to item number five, Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This amendment resulted from a code error on my part. I, my line items were added and will remove twenty years with the school's budget. And it transposing the budget they submitted to the budget committee and into the consolidated budget that was presented to this commission. One line was slipped in and shouldn't have, so there's no total monetary difference. However, it did result in four lines in the school budget being key in here. This would just be moving those funds to correct that.
Motion approved. A motion by Mr. Tagg, the second, by Mr. Hilton. Anybody have any questions about item number five? Nobody has any questions, I'll ask for the call roll.
Michael Dale?
Yes.
Carl Bolton?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Gillen?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Killian?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Ian Lawton?
Yes.
Emma Guthrie?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Reedy?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Rutherford?
Yes.
Tony Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? 22 yes.
Item number five passes 22 to zero. We'll move on to item number six. I requested item number six for Building Grounds, which is the budget finance management, to place $500,000 to fix the roof at the mall, and I don't have bids for that. And I don't have bids for that. We will put it out for bids. We've got our team working on it. But we don't want to hold up and waste any more of the time we will have for bad weather to get the roof replaced over there. So that's worth the five hundred thousand. Six hundred sixty thousand dollars is to replace the phone system here for administrative building and, uh, courthouse and EMS. That, uh, the homeowners are told me if we have a lightning strike on our phone system here, they do not make parts anymore to fix it. And then changing our phone system will actually be able to save a thousand dollars a month because of what we're paying on the leased equipment that they don't have any parts for. So that's worth the sixty thousand dollars, and that's the two considerations of this budget. Motion approved. And motion by Mr. Call Taylor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Reubler. Anybody have any questions?
I still have one question, and this is the, the first of mine. The five hundred thousand is coming out of the block.
Oh, okay.
And all of it coming out of the block.
All of it.
Okay. Thank you. Are we, are we reasonably comfortable with a thousand, a thousand dollar program?
Thank you. I mean, I, that, the way things are now today, that, that's our best estimate.
Okay. So what if it costs more? And we're going to have to come back?
We could possibly, that could lead, we could have to add to that, a lot of changes, but that wouldn't be possible. We're just trying to save time, what we're trying to do. How's it, we get somebody on that roof before bad weather. It'd be a lot better than going in December or January and going to replace it.
What's the worst part of that roof?
It's, uh, it's not exactly, it's just areas. They've actually replaced the areas up there, and it's cut up quite a bit. They've got raised areas, then they've got areas that they've replaced. So it's nothing where you just go, first, I need to do all of it. But they just contemplated that we can hold off on some of those. Boy, approved, we're going to do them in, uh, segments.
I know, JCPD bill, play it out with the manager.
Yeah. And, uh, so it's, it's just some different places.
Now, how much money is going to be left on the line of money?
So, yeah. So that's that line. So change. So it's, 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 it's still on the market. Anybody else have any more questions? If there's none, I'll ask question call roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolton.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Gillian.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Heinz.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ian Moffitt.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prager.
Yes.
Chris Reiki.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Rudeley.
Yes.
Tony Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stow.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Wayne Wilcher.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-two yes.
Item number six, passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to item number seven. Now, that Mr. Tony Savage put that number first, also first. For that noise. Uh, this is revised benefit addendum template for the Warren County EMS, Warren County Sheriff's Department. Uh, at this time, I think I'll call, uh, Mr. Britton up here to explain this a little further than I can.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, uh, this is a, a twofold issue. Number one is we started working into the new, uh, procedures in the handbook. Uh, we found that the, uh, maximum time to reach the benefit by the EMS office was seventeen years, where the other departments were, were maxing out at fourteen years. So we did some work to try to level over that, to get everybody on the same playing field. And, and with that, uh, we had to make some changes in hours, uh, per year to make the total numbers work out across the board. Uh, it does not add any benefit, no increased cost to the county. But we tried to make sure in working with the finance department, uh, and with the EMS director to make all those numbers work out consistently across the board. Uh, we did a similar effort on, on C-15, which was the sheriff's department. And both of these, uh, stemmed from the fact of the rotating shifts and the amount of hours they worked per shift, uh, to try to keep that platform level across the board, uh, so that everybody's, uh, vacation benefits. And that's the only one that we looked at, was the vacation time, to make sure it was clear across the board, everybody maxed out at the same amount of years.
Motion approved. And motion by Mr. Bell. Second by Mr. Savage. If they have any questions, Mr. Britton, just changing the policy, trying to make the fire. If they have any questions? If there's no questions, all last question, call roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolton.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Gillian.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Heinz.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ian Moffitt.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prager.
Yes.
Chris Reiki.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Rudeley.
Yes.
Tony Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stow.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Wayne Wilcher.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-two yes.
Item number seven, passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to item number eight, Mr. Gary Prager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Warren County, Tennessee maintains a system of many hundreds of miles of roads throughout the county. A request has been made to close a portion of the track road, beginning at its intersection with Old Rock Island Road and continuing with the midrins of the track road in the general northeasterly direction for approximately nine hundred and ninety feet more or less. I put this in a form of a motion.
Second by Mr. Savage. Any discussion? I have put you a piece of paper here. That, that's some future, may or may not happen expansion. And we are proud that we got Victor represented as here tonight. And Ms. Snides here, our IBB director. And if you have any questions, we'll try to, uh... Yeah. I'd only let you know, Steven and I are on the painting commission. We had a public hearing. No one showed for anything against. Had a letter of approval by one of the people probably mostly affected, and, uh, it, it passed unanimously. Yes. Anybody else have any questions? We're glad y'all come down tonight. Appreciate having you here, and we'll ask our...
Mr. Chairman, it, it will be safer having that portion of the road closed because a lot of, a lot of, these people could have come down through there and, and, you know, they had a little side of the road and could have been hacked in yet. So it's really safe having that closed.
Thank you. Any more questions? All last question, call roll.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolton.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Gillian.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Heinz.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Ian Moffitt.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prager.
Yes.
Chris Reiki.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Rudeley.
Yes.
Tony Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stow.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Wayne Wilcher.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Motion passes twenty-two. Yes, to zero. Uh, we really appreciate y'all coming down. Y'all welcome anytime. We'll move on to item number ten, approval of voters.
This is Liz with the voters. Catherine Alvin, Hannah Vaughn, Nathan Logan, Danielle Dunn, Mariana Pizzata, Ricky Purdis, Harry Nunway, Angela Lee Miller, Barry Bass, Barrett Brown, and Linda Vincent.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got motion. I have a second. All those in favor of Britton and Nevers, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to the announcements. Uh, I have, I had, this Carly Brown texted me today. She's in Nashville with her transplant team. And she will return September the sixth, go in the hospital for eighteen days. Stay up two to fifteen days. And she mentioned to get the stem cell transplant. She'll return home for fifteen days after that. And then one hundred days after that, she'll be tested. And hopefully she'll be in her remission. And I ask that everybody keep her in your fire. This way we'll go through with the line. Does anybody else have any?
Obviously, we'd like to announce the largest event in Warren County, the Warren County A and L Fair. Uh, it's September eighth through the sixteenth coming up, so obviously be mindful of that and come out and participate and, uh, come support all the local events. This is probably one of the largest fundraisers for, uh, local, uh, uh, community clubs and stuff of that nature. So come out and support those, and, uh, we look to see you at the fair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have got a load of, uh, water mountains out in the back of my truck. They're homegrown water mountains I'm always proud of, and I always give them to one of the county, the county commissioners. They go out there and get pick and tock. However, some of my neighbors are here tonight, and I want the minister to go out there first. Those guys who tell me, come to my house if you want one. Thank you. And they are good. The only way they can taste better is stole a metal pack. They swept in the field last night.
You didn't steal them, did you? Mr. Chairman, we have a highway bridge tomorrow meeting at four o'clock.
Four o'clock. Any more?
Mr. Chairman, uh, as tight as Tommy is, if he's giving something away, you better go get it. And on that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor of say aye.